It is Monday, June 17th, 2013, and I will call this meeting of the Norfolk City Council to order. This is an open meeting. Hosted in the west wall of this room is the actual Open Meeting Act, and I would ask if you would stand with us now for a moment of silence and as well, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bethany, you'll take your call?
Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Lawson?
Here.
Murren?
Here.
Mooney?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
File?
Here.
All right, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda as provided you.
So move, Your Honor?
Second.
Motion with a second to approve the consent agenda, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and as well, approval of the full agenda as presented you.
So moved?
Second.
Move with a second to approve the full agenda again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay. We do have one special proclamation this evening that I will read for the Arc of Norfolk's 60th anniversary. Whereas the Arc of Norfolk is a nonprofit, parent-driven, 90-membership organization that is celebrating its 60th year of advocating for the rights of citizens with developmental disabilities and their families throughout northeast Nebraska, and whereas the organization came together in 1953, when little was known about the condition of developmental disability or its causes, whereas due to members' collective desire to raise children in their home and their stubborn refusal to accept that institutionalization was the only option, the Arc was formed. And whereas the Arc is a presence for direct advocacy in school systems, assisting families in ensuring a free and appropriate public education, and with adults in navigating the Developmental Disabilities Division of Nebraska Health and Human Services, whereas the Arc of Norfolk runs a variety of programs, including a self-advocacy group and provides workshop and training to self-advocates and parents, and whereas the Arc believes that every citizen, regardless of his or her developmental disability, has a right to live, work, learn, play, worship, and serve others within the local community, it also believes that with the proper support, a high quality of life can be possible for anyone. So now therefore, be it resolved that I sue Fuickman, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim June 10th through the 14th as the Arc of Norfolk's 60th anniversary and encourage citizens to recognize and congratulate the Arc for its achievements in advocating rights for developmental disabled citizens. So, I don't see anyone here tonight. I did have the opportunity to spend the evening the other night with them through their anniversary, so I read it to them there, since we were a little behind on my end on this part of it, but they did ask that we read it in, and so it is, and I will make sure that they get this final copy, so. That being said, we'll move on to action items. The first is a public hearing to consider submitting an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant in the amount of $150,000 for comprehensive revitalization activities. I will open this hearing, and I would look to Mr. Higginbotham to come forward and tell us of those activities.
Yeah, we're here to have the standard public hearing for community development grants. If you remember, I was here about a month ago or so, kind of went over the updated study that we did, which identified a bunch of priorities to be used with the next round of funding. This is that funding. I do need to make one correction. In the public hearing notice, it was referenced that $50,000 was going to be used for single-family, I mean multifamily rental rehabilitation. We have got clarification from the state of Nebraska that if we're going to do rental rehabilitation from one to four units, that's considered single-family. Multifamily is more than four units, and we just don't have the dollars in these grants. Our intention always was to do rental rehab, one to four units or less, but that's considered single-family. So, we're making a change from multifamily to single-family, so I just need to note that in the minutes. The rest of the money, we're looking to put $40,500 into street improvements, the $50,000 into the rental rehabilitation of one to four units. There's some administration in there for housing management, and also some lead-based paint inspections in case those rental units are built prior to '78, and then some general administration. So, and these dollars are matched dollar for dollar. The city is putting in the match on the street improvements. The property owners of the rental rehabilitation will have to provide dollar match on those, and also putting in $37,500 to continue the downtown facade improvement program, which the downtown businesses match that also, so, to meet the matching requirements. Are there any questions about this?
No questions at all, council? If not, Tom, it's always good to have you here doing this work for us, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and if no further discussion at all, I will close the public hearing and ask for consideration of Resolution Number 2013-18, approving the application as presented by Tom.
I would introduce Resolution 2013-18.
Second.
Motion with a second. Is there any discussion at all? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2013-18 is adopted.
All right, and next is a public hearing to receive a report on findings and suggestions from the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Review Committee as required by state statute. I will open this hearing and look to you, Randy, to give us an update.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a requirement of state statutes. Every six months, the Citizens Advisory Review Committee, or CARC, has to meet and review the city's economic development program, and that report is given to the council in a public hearing, and that's what this public hearing is for. The members of the CARC are Bill Cannon, Cindy Morrow, Jim Mangels, Aaron Ott, and Jan Einspar, and I'm an ex-official member of the CARC. The CARC met on June 11th, 2013, and the CARC's report is included in the agenda packet. I'll just briefly review the contents of that report with you. The CARC reviewed the Economic Development Fund financial statements for the fiscal year-to-date. As of April 30, there was $746,703 of cash in the Economic Development Fund. That's the fund that has the LB840 money. The only expenditure out of that money so far has been the $155,750 of funding to premier senior marketing, and that was reflected in the financial statements. The CARC also reviewed the resolution the council passed on May 6, Resolution 2013-13. That resolution, if you remember, was the resolution that did away with our formal guidelines and procedures, and after the passage of that resolution, then the economic development programs governed by the voter-approved economic development plan, they reviewed that, and as you'll see a little bit later on, they made a change to their checklist to incorporate that. They'd asked for a change to the checklist the last time they met, and that's what they go through when they meet and make sure, kind of check off, make sure we're doing what we say we're going to do and supposed to do. They used the existing program guidelines with the review. This time, going forward, they recommended to staff that we draw up a new checklist that simply reflects the voter-approved economic development plan and not the detailed guidelines. So that's something we'll be doing here before the CARC meets again, and when they meet again, they'll be reviewing, and we'll report back to the council on our compliance with the voter-approved plan instead of the economic development guidelines as they did this time. They also reviewed the premier senior marketing project. As I mentioned, that loan closed during this reporting period. It closed on December 20th. That's a forgivable loan, and if they create the jobs that pay the wages that they're supposed to, that will be 99% forgiven. They agreed to create 21 new jobs by May 31st of 2013, well, by May of 2013, I'm not sure what the exact date was, but they've created 26 jobs, so they're well on the, well past the number of jobs they have to create. They have to retain those jobs for three years, and they have to pay a certain level of funding, or pay a certain level of wages, and so we'll be monitoring that for the next couple of years to make sure they meet those requirements, and if they do, the loan will be 99% forgiven. They also reviewed the Peterson-Ag application that was presented to the council through April 18th meeting and approved funding for that up to $60,000. Peterson-Ag wanted to know if they qualify for that funding because their sighting could be either in or outside of the two-mile zoning jurisdiction. They haven't selected a site yet. If they're inside, they would get the $60,000; if they're outside, they wouldn't, so that was an important consideration for them, and they wanted that known as they were trying to determine where they were going to select their site. So they may or may not get LB840 funding depending on where they end up. And then, economic development staff gave them an economic development update, and finally, the CARC found that the city's economic development program was operating in compliance with the budget and EDP guidelines and procedures. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Randy. Any questions at all regarding that? Hearing done. I will close the hearing then. Thanks. Moving right on to the regular agenda then, we need consideration of Resolution 2013-19, approving the mayor's reappointment of the clerk, treasurer, engineer, attorney, and administrator as required by statute.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion with a second. I think this goes back to, if you remember right, at one time this was done soon after the mayor first would take office, and I think that first year, I wasn't ready to do that, and I think it was probably a recommendation by staff that we change that date to be after, well, this, what is it, the first of June?
Yes.
Is what it is.
First in June, first meeting in June, technically is when it's supposed to be.
Yeah, and somehow that kind of got biased too, but that's the reason that we're doing this in June rather than first part of the year. So any questions, comments, concerns with any of this? If not, I would ask you to please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2013-19 is adopted.
And next, following that would be consideration of approval of employment agreement with Shane Widener for the position of Norfolk City Administrator. Again, I would like a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion with a second. Discussion at all, council? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and next is consideration of ordinance Number 5255, annexing approximately 6.98 acres, which is the remaining portion of Lot 2 of Norfolk Nursery Edition, generally located out south of Sunrise Drive. Ordinance 5255 passed on the first reading at the May 20th city council meeting and on second reading at the June 3rd, 2013 city council meeting. So we are looking at the third reading here. If I could have that motion?
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance 5255 on third reading.
Second.
Motion with a second. I would ask you to please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5255 is approved.
Next would be consideration of ordinance Number 5256, amending Section 24-150 of the city code to increase the fine for parking violations from $10 to $25. This ordinance, 5256, passed on first reading at the June 3rd city council meeting. I would ask for a motion to hear on second reading.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second. Do we have some discussion on this item?
I just want to read into the record that I was contacted by a couple of businesses downtown. They weren't as upset about the two-and-a-half times the increase in the ticket. They're not, they're a little opposed to the way that they're going to, the downtown's going at it, so I just wanted to read it in the record. They were supposed to be here tonight, I do not see them here, so.
Well, and Councilman, I can echo that a little bit. I was contacted by a lack of a beauty shop that is in the downtown, and for those that come in, and for some, it takes more than two hours to get the full extent of whatever needs to be done, and they're very concerned about that as well. Now they've shared that with the owners. So again, it's coming forward a little bit after the discussion. I'm sorry that it wasn't taken up maybe with the, you know, the vehicle parking district group, but there is a little bit of concern out there yet too on how that's going to be handled.
Right, and that was like beauty salons, local pubs, places where people go sit for more than 15, 20 minutes are the ones that are concerned. I told them they need to talk to the downtown, which they have been to some of the meetings, but got outvoted, so they just wanted us to know about it, so, and I think it is a legitimate concern on some of the businesses, so.
Yeah, I'd agree. Any other discussion on that at all?
Matter of clarification, then, the ticketing on it occurs how, Clint? I mean, apparently, I don't think we're going around chalking tires, are we starting that again?
My understanding, and we're talking, if we're talking about the hourly, the hourly provision, my understanding is that it's contemplated that initially, if there is a concern, there's going to be a courtesy reminder that's going to be placed on the vehicle by, actually by whoever Chief Meisner authorizes to do it, downtown property owners, downtown tenants, or whatever. And the authority for that is going to come from Chief Meisner through to the vehicle parking district, because without that authority, if you or I were to decide that we were going to enforce it and went out and started hanging stuff on the cars, that would be littering when we placed it on the cars. So, Bill's going to authorize that. The second thing that's contemplated then, and you're not going to see this in the ordinance, it's going to be in the manner of the protocols of the way that police are going to handle that as requested by the vehicle parking district. If the courtesy reminder or whatever doesn't have the desired effect, they'll then call the police department, and the police department's protocol would be that the initial contact that they might have with an offender would be to provide a written warning. And then, only after the third offense, or the third contact, would the protocols that the police department have indicate that they were going to ticket those folks. So, as it relates to the downtown, that's the three things. This ordinance is before you, if it, you know, I suppose it should be said that, you know, we've talked all about the inflationary effects since 1986 and all of that, but if we're getting any other parking ticket other than those timed parking tickets, if I'm getting a ticket because I'm parking by a fire hydrant, for instance, there's probably not going to be those multiple contacts in regard to that, and if I get a ticket, it's going to be a $25 ticket from the get-go, if this ordinance is ultimately approved. One of the things that you'll also see in the ordinance where we talked about it was that with the discussion that was had about getting the signs and everything in place with an effective date of October 1, you'll see both that we have suggested that you consider amending the ordinance passed on first reading to insert Section 2 that's in the ordinance that we've got there that would provide an October 1 operative date, and you'll see that as well in the subsequent ordinances which relate to the parking restrictions downtown.
Okay, any other comments or?
I guess I just wanted to point out that by that, that the downtown merchants are going to start the clock on their own parking, you know, so I think they're all fairly cordial and neighborly down there, so I don't see that as a problem. But the other thing is, Clint, maybe you can touch on where this money goes from the tickets so that people think we're not just trying to ring up the coffers for the city of Norfolk.
Real civic lesson. Under the Nebraska Constitution, and not all states are this way, but under the Nebraska Constitution, any of the fines after allowing for an administrative fee that if we just pay the, what is now a $10 fine or the $25 fine, there's an administrative fee that the violations bureau, the clerk's office is authorized to retain, and the rest of that money goes to the school district. And incidentally, since we're talking about it, if we get a ticket for, if one of Bill's officers gives us a ticket for speeding or running a stop sign, all of the fine money from that goes to the public schools. If we go one step farther, if we're outside going on our way to Madison and we're ticketed by the State Patrol or by the county sheriff, and that's filed under a speeding ticket under the state statute, then that's split between all of the school, between all the school districts in the state based upon their percentage of school-aged children. So, we don't get to do any of the smoky and abandoned things and make money for the city by issuing those tickets.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other discussion at all?
Your Honor, I'd like to amend to insert Section 2, provide an operative date of October 1, 2013.
Okay, so, then we, I'm sorry?
Need a second.
Right, okay, so we have a motion here to amend. Do I have a second?
Have a second, Your Honor.
Okay, so we need to vote first on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so if you would please vote on the amendment as Councilman Murren presented.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
All right, so are we ready for a short title here now, Beth?
You're going to consider the entire ordinance as amended on second reading.
Okay, okay, all right, so if you understood what I'm just saying, we are going to consider the, what is it, 5256 with the amendment on, when are we, second reading here?
Yes.
Am I right? Okay, first reading was on the June 3rd meeting. All right.
Second reading as amended.
Second reading as amended, okay, all right, so do we have a motion? We do have a motion, do we have a second on that motion? We do, please vote.
Short title. An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section 24-150 of the official city code to impose an increase in the fine for parking violation from $10 to $25, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, if you will please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5256 carries on second reading as amended.
All right, next would be consideration of ordinance Number 5257, amending Section 24-167 of the city code to reduce the parking time limit in off-street parking lots from three hours to two hours between 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday.
Your Honor, I introduce ordinance Number 5257.
Second, Your Honor.
All right, we have a motion with a second for consideration of 5257 on first reading here. Any discussion? If not, Beth, short title?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section 24-167 of the official city code to reduce the parking time limit in off-street parking lots from three hours to two hours between 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5257 carries on first reading.
This is all tied into the October 1 start date, so there's no real hurry to passes.
Okay, all right, then we'll move to, for consideration of ordinance Number 5258, amending Section 24-165.2 of the city code to change the days from the 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. parking restriction in downtown so that the restriction will be in effect Monday through Friday rather than Monday through Saturday.
Your Honor, I would introduce ordinance Number 5258.
Motion with a second for consideration of ordinance Number 5258 on first reading. Any discussion?
Pretty self-explanatory, a short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section 24-165.2 of the official city code to change the days of the 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. parking restriction in downtown Norfolk so that the restriction will be in effect Monday through Friday rather than Monday through Saturday, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, with that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5258 carries on first reading.
All right, and moving on to consideration of ordinance Number 5259, amending Section 2-5 of the code to update the city's comprehensive fee schedule.
Your Honor, I would introduce ordinance Number 5259 on first reading.
Second, Your Honor.
A motion with a second to introduce ordinance Number 5259 on first reading. Discussion at all? If not, short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section 2-5 of the official city code to update the comprehensive fee schedule, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5259 carries on first reading.
All right, and finally, is consideration of sending letters supporting the Marketplace Fairness Act to the Nebraska's three United States representatives. I would ask for a motion for consideration.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Randy, do you want to give us a little input on that?
Yes, I'd like to do that, Your Honor. Passage of the Marketplace Fairness Act is one of the city council's priorities for the current fiscal year, and it's making good progress. It passed the Senate on May 6 by a 69 to 27 vote. President Obama supports it, says he will sign it if it passes the House. So we've got one remaining hurdle, which is passage in the House. I understand the opponents of the Marketplace Fairness Act are lobbying heavily against it in the House to try to stop it, so the purpose of this letter is to have all the elected officials on record with their representatives saying that we support the passage of the Marketplace Fairness Act. This act doesn't require any new taxes, doesn't implement any new taxes, it simply enforces or allows a collection of the taxes that are already in place. Remote sales, sales on the internet, sales by telephone, sales by mail order, those are not, the merchants making those sales are not required to collect that tax unless they have a nexus in the state. So if a merchant has no nexus in Nebraska, he doesn't have a physical location or physical presence here, they don't have to collect that sales tax. People, when they buy those items online or buy those items through the mail, they're supposed to pay a use tax on those, and there's even a little spot on your income tax return when you file your state income tax return where you can put in the use tax you owe on those items. Compliance with that is extremely poor. Very little of the owed use tax by individuals is getting paid. Business compliance is pretty high, but individual compliance, it isn't zero, but it's very, very low. So most of the tax, use tax owed by individuals is going out and paid. With the passage of the Marketplace Fairness Act, states that have passed the streamlined sales and use tax agreement, Nebraska's one of 24 states that have, or states that pass similar simplification rules to their sales tax, will then be allowed to enforce a collection of their sales tax on remote sellers. One of the main objections I've heard to the Marketplace Fairness Act is it'll place an undue burden on remote sellers, that it'll be too burdensome for them to collect the sales tax. I don't believe that's the case with the simplification that is required in the sales tax rules, and there are merchants and software providers out there that will help the merchants collect this tax. I don't think it will be at all burdensome for most retailers to collect this tax, and the small retailers, those with less than a million dollars of online sales or remote sales, are exempted into the Marketplace Fairness Act. So I think with those certified software providers and certified service providers, that argument that it's too burdensome is simply not true, and I think this is something that's long overdue, and I hope our U.S. representatives vote for this. vote for this. And I encourage the support of this letter.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Does anyone have any questions or comments or concerns about what is being asked of you as a councilperson? I know, Randy, I know, Randy, you've been asked more than once, but how does this affect the City of Norfolk as far as, do we have any feel for that?
I know it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, the best estimate I can get of that is to take, all over the nation, there's estimated, there's 23 billion with a B of sales tax that's going out and collected, that this would help collect. And of that 23 billion, 118 million is estimated to be in the state of Nebraska. If you take the City of Norfolk's share of the total state and local sales tax collected in Nebraska, that's about 6% of the total, which means we're somewhere a little under $500,000 of City of Norfolk tax that isn't paid, based on these estimates done by various people. I think that these numbers are from University of Tennessee study, some universities study, but there's been other studies out there that show similar results. So I'm guessing just shy of a half million dollars annually.
Interesting, so if this would pass and the president signed, then when does, do they, is there a time given to those businesses to comply? I mean...
I can't remember the details of the effective date in that act, but I'm sure they would be given some time within the act to bring their systems online and get into place, but I, I can't remember what those timelines are.
I would assume that you'd have at least a good year before it would actually, I'm making an assumption, though.
I can't remember the timeline, but it would be, I don't think it'd be immediate, and I'm guessing there won't be 100% compliance amongst the vendors that are supposed to be collecting this tax. So we probably won't get the whole half a million dollar impact, but I would think all the major, the Amazons and the Bass Pros of the world would comply with this. So I expect we would see a significant boost in sales tax revenue once this takes effect, to tune up hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Anybody else have questions for him at all? Okay, no further discussion, then I would ask that you please vote.
Mayor Wilby abstaining from the vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Councilman Mooney abstaining, motion carries.
All right, all right, nothing else on our regular agenda, tonight is a public comment period. So what this means, if we have someone in the audience that wants to come forward and speak to this council and the city staff that's with us tonight, you're sure welcome to do so, whatever the topic may be, we would ask that you would introduce yourself, give us your address, and then please understand, it is nothing more than to inform of your question, concern, whatever, but no action can be taken by this council tonight. Is there anyone that wants to come forward and speak with us? Please do. Again, I would ask that you state your name for us, sir.
Hi, my name is Tom Rogge. I live at 1806 Mulberry Drive, and I have a problem with the parking of Morrissey Motors, okay?
Okay.
My wife works at Vaulkraft, she comes home for lunch. There's been more than twice that she's left Vaulkraft and went by the driveway to pull into Morrissey Motors, and someone's pulled out in front of her. And one of these times, they're gonna hit her because they can't see on account of cars setting to the curb on both sides of the driveway. That's a problem that I got, and all of their, on their, on the south part of the lot there is parked with bumpers hanging over the curb. I'm not pulling any chain or anything, but that's the truth. And I know that there's supposed to be no parking on one side of the street there. And that's not happening. There's no signs, there's supposed to be a sign.
Okay.
And I personally stopped in and asked them, and they pretty much laughed at me.
Why, I can tell you, sir, that it certainly will, it's been heard by the staff here, and we will make sure that action is, we will have conversation with them again. I'm not quite sure I understand completely, but I do understand your concern. And so, with that being said, I would look to our city administrator...
I've talked to Police Chief Meisner over a year ago, and he was gonna look into it, but the way I understand it, nobody wants to do anything on account of, they don't wanna upset anybody.
Well, I, I would like to tell you that I don't know that I would agree with that because if there is something there that is illegal or certainly putting our citizens in a dangerous position, then I promise you that it will be addressed. And please understand, I do remember this conversation, I remember this being brought to the attention probably over a year ago. Sometimes we have a way of falling back into the habit that maybe was started some time ago, so I'm sure, you know, again, I'll look at our city administrator to make sure that he has conversation with Chief Meisner and his group, and see if we can't get it taken care of for you.
And also, isn't there a, a five-foot law on if you're able to park on this side of the street, that the passenger on your side can open their door?
I, I don't know that I'm familiar with that at all, but again...
I think that's a true statement, and if you would park on that side of the street, there's no way that you could open the door on the passenger's side.
Okay, all right, well, and I appreciate your coming forward, that's what this is about, and I promise you that you've been heard, and we certainly will get back to you and give you what we learned.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Your Honor, we, we have had complaint about that from Vaulkraft and have looked into it over the last year. Chief Meisner and his staff have had conversations with Morrissey, and I think at times it may be a bit of a creep as you, as you described there, Mayor, that they creep back towards the curb there. The signage issue, we'll look at and see if we can't address that with Morrissey Motors in particular. And I just wanted to be clear, sir, on the, in your estimation, is there parking allowed on the north side of that street so we, if someone parked there, the bumper overhang would not allow them to get out, is that what you're saying as well?
That's correct.
Okay, very good.
You understand?
I've made notes to that and understand what his concern is, and we'll readdress that again, all right?
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to come forward?
Hi, my name is Bob Huntley.
I was Mr. Huntley.
I live at 301 State Highway 35 North. I've had a problem that I've been concerned about, and I can't seem to get an answer. There's a creek that winds through my place, and I've asked, and I don't, can't get an answer from any of the staff, is it drains a big area, starts in Stanton County, the Ag Center, the, where the pole climbers are, that all drains down, ends up on my property, and I've, I've been asking for a drainage study. Now Dick Johnson, his wisdom, has just put my property, half of it, or about three-fourths of it, in the flood plain. So I'm asking that why, what do we have to do to get a drainage study in the east part of Norfolk? We're talking about, they're building houses out there, they're building apartments, yeah.
What I can tell you, Mr. Huntley, is certainly, I'm, I'm gonna look to staff and say, we're gonna have to sit down and review, and I, I, again, I do know that I, the name has come up more than once within the city staff meetings, I'm not sure that I can tell you where we are with it or, or what action needs to happen, but, city administrator, do you wanna...
We got, I wrote that down as well, and I, I met with Mr. Huntley, I don't know, six months ago, Bob, I suppose, we were out there and drove your pasture, maybe it was a little bit longer than that, maybe last fall sometime and drove that, and as he described that drainage issue to me, and we drove his pasture back there through that dry creek, for the most part, it's dry other than, as Bob described, some major rains, you know, we really, the main focus of that was the continued development of that property to the east, if I recall correctly, Bob, and as that addition, if, if, or when it continues to expand to the east, he was wondering about the continued drainage along there, and then, you know, those developments are looked at as we, as we develop our community and continue to expand our, our city limits, we look at drainage, and drainage is a major part of what the developers need to look at, they need to have engineering studies, as, as we talked about that day, and so, you know, the studies come along with those developments typically, and, you know, I know we talked about the drainage across Highway 35 as well and the box culvert being fairly large, but I don't, did you have, you had a concern directly about that as well?
No, not the box.
The box culvert?
I'm just concerned about all the water and, you know, where do, where, where do we start? Now, I know on the west side of town, we did a drainage study out there, and we decided all that, and now all of a sudden Dick Johnson shows up and just, and I, and I can show you the maps, he just put like three-fourths of my property in the flood plain.
Sure, when Walters, yeah, and you, you were advising Mayor and Council to know about that additional study that was required, what happened when Walters did their addition over there, is we had, I don't know, several, several homes along that dry creek area that were being developed. There was a mapping error, we partnered with Johnson Engineering at that point, and the developers of that property out there to request a letter of map amendment from FEMA. That took an incredible amount of time, unfortunately, when you're dealing with, sometimes when you're dealing with the federal layers of, of government, it takes a long time to get that done. I know we had several citizens that either had bought homes recently or had purchased them in the past that were having their finances questioned by their banks and, and reevaluated because there was some indication that they might be in the flood plain. And they had to play flood insurance at that point, and they were upset about that, so that was hence the development of the map amendment, which was just recently approved by FEMA. But when they did the new map, you know, the map's the map, I mean, the study is the study, when they did this engineering study, it did change the lines of demarcation, and as you described, onto your property, absolute, that's absolutely true. The facts of the matter are, anytime you change, that's, I mean, anytime you do the study, the, the engineering data would indicate the true drainage of that, of that drainage area, I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean that it wasn't, it, it is what it is, for lack of better words, I mean, we can't really change the drainage, I mean, the map is the map, and the engineering is the engineering, so, you know, and unfortunately, it had some detrimental effect to the, to the line that encompasses your property, but there's really no way to change that around and make that different for anyone, in my estimation, anyway.
So you think Dick Johnson's study is complete, and given, developed the whole area?
Dick Johnson's study, and to my understanding, and Dennis, maybe you know more about it than I do, but I don't necessarily think that it's the whole area to the east of that development, but it's the area that was developed when the Walters addition, as it goes east, and the houses that are being set there now, and that drainage areas, including that dry creek, your, and your areas, as described in that floodway map amendment. So yes, for that, now, it doesn't most likely include east of that drainage ditch and that undeveloped area, if that's your question, just how I'm understanding.
Well, the question is, like, up there at the state hospital, that property ends up down there. Now, we, we, we just let them build a multimillion dollar buildings up there, and, and we didn't consider the drains, now the drainage runs down and runs out and ends up down in our property?
Yeah, actually, you know, when you looked at the development of that, of the vets home out there, or the regional center out there, many of those buildings, the impervious coverage area has been reduced because the buildings have been dismantled and taken on, so that increased the pervious coverage of the ground area, so the rain saturation levels for that area actually probably will be better in the long term, so that should reduce the overall drainage down there, I would think.
Buildings and drain off the roofs, and it runs down, washes out the hitches like it has been.
Right, I understand, but they, they demolished many buildings out there, so that reduced...
I'm talking about the two buildings, big buildings, the Ag Center and the, the...
Oh, okay, I, I thought you was talking about the regional...
Oh, no, not, well, that property drains too.
Yeah, the Northeast Community College does have some...
The Suez Lagoon from there drained down there.
Right, that's right.
Same way.
But I got your comments down, Bob, we can sit down and meet and discuss it if you'd like, with city staff, I apologize if you haven't been getting your answers to your questions, I guess, to be honest with you, after we met, I was in a wait and hold pattern, I thought that's what our understanding was, but if that is different from what you understood, we can sure line up the meeting and we can discuss it.
That night, I didn't have a, a map from Dick Johnson.
That would be accurate.
Thanks for listening.
One of the, one of the things, though, is that Mr. Johnson's map doesn't change where the water flows.
Correct.
Correct?
What?
Dick Johnson may have done some floodway things on a map, but he didn't do anything that changed where the water flows, isn't that true?
Well, but he put me, three-quarters of my land, which is 30 acres, in a flood, in a flood plain.
Does he listen to that?
I don't, Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, but Dennis, or Mr. Johnson didn't do the floodway or floodplain designation, did he? That is a FEMA operation situation, he may have clarified it, but the floodplain and floodway designation is developed by FEMA, is it not?
The original floodplain mapping was developed by FEMA. As a part of the Walters development, as Shane said, we ended up with some properties that were encroaching into the designated floodplain. We went in and looked at, some of which FEMA didn't catch, the, the fill was there before they did the, did the mapping, so that was a mapping problem. To change that, if you're requesting that change, you have to do the engineering data in studies to develop the impacts from that activity. That is what Mr. Johnson did, and actually, it was Minelli Wagner and associates out of Lincoln that did the, did the work, but they just based, and that was strictly based on the flows that are coming through there, and the area where those flows can, can go so that you're not having impacts to the elevation of the flood. And to answer, I think Clint's question is, is did the Walters development change where the creek was?
I mean, people, generally, the law in Nebraska is that people have the right to develop their property, and as they do that, whether they create impervious cover, and there's roofs, and there's parking lots, as long as they don't change where the water can go, it can affect people downstream, and they get more water than what they had before. And if we're downhill, certain things flow downhill, water being one of them, and, and we unfortunately have to take that water if, if, if we're on the receding end. And so, you know, there's a difference between everybody up and down can use their property more efficiently, and I don't know what exactly that situation is with you or where the water goes from your property, or maybe it doesn't go anywhere.
Well, sure, drains it in, the ultimate place is down the Alcorn River.
So, but, but generally speaking, everyone isn't able to develop... So, but, but generally speaking, everyone isn't able to develop their, their property, and if it results in more runoff, they, they're gonna continue to put it in the same place where it's always gone, even though if you or I are watching it, we may see that there's a greater quantity of water, but if it's the same water that's come off of the same place, we still have to, we still have to take that. And, and my point earlier was that the map that you're talking about, I think, really reflects elevations and, and what was, what was there, even though it's on a map, but it's not a, it's not necessarily a physical change. I mean, there was no dirt moving or whatever in regard to the map changes that, that FEMA, FEMA braced and ultimately approved. That's all I'm saying.
Well, that's why I say, I think there ought to be a drainage study of that whole area. We're gonna continue to develop out there.
Well, now-
You know?
Before there's gonna be development, though, whoever the developer would be, correct me if I'm wrong, but then there would be some drainage study done. Is that correct? I mean, and I'm not sure I understand exactly where you are, Bob, but I don't know that, is that really what your, what your concern is? Is that future development is gonna cause-
Firstly, affecting.
All right. So-
Like it has a long year now.
But it's not-
All of a sudden, I've got 30 acres that I can't develop. I can't do anything with it.
Because?
It's in the floodplain. That's that map that's right there.
I see. Okay. All right.
And that's because people above me are sending their water down.
The line on the map went kind of like an hourglass a little bit, and bumped out on, on to Bob's property. But the facts are the facts. I mean, the drainage is, is the drain. So, I, the fact that that line moved after the new study is unfortunate for Mr. Huntley, but the line is, did move, and that's where the water will go in event of major rain. And then it'll continue, as Bob said, continue down to, to the Elkhorn River. So, all the properties technically, and obviously, all the properties from their south have some potential to be affected, but drainage, there's not much to study there. I'm not sure, I mean, I guess I'm not sure what we'd study further, Bob, to be quite honest with you. Does it, I don't know if it would change the map at all. Is that what you're looking for, a change in it?
Well, I don't know. That, that's what a study ought to do, I would think.
Are you requesting an additional FEMA study beyond the one that was just occurred?
I don't know if that was a FEMA study. I don't know, or was it Dick Johnson?
It was a, no, it was, it was a study to provide data to FEMA to do a map amendment, is what it was. And that was all based on engineering data. So, then FEMA reviews that, and they either concur or not, or don't concur with it. In this case, they concurred with the data that was provided by Wagner Minelli, and then she got your map amendment.
Shane, ultimately, the kinds of issues we're talking about here, aren't there really two kinds of drainage issues? One is, you've got the purely regulatory thing of FEMA and whatever that says, you've gotta be, if you're in the wrong area, you can't, you have limitations on building because you're in the, you're, you're in the, in the designated area. The separate part of that is, as part of any development, if, if you're going to develop it and put on roofs and parking lots and create more impervious area and more runoff, you've gotta provide for a plan of how that's gonna work and where the drainage is gonna go. Isn't that what, what happens? Dennis, isn't that what, basically what happens?
Yeah.
I mean, you're, the one part, you're physically talking about where the water's gonna be transported to, and a mechanism to get it there. And the second part is one where, where you've gotta, you, you, you must comply with the FEMA regulations, or local government can't, you, you can't get permits for the development in the area if it's not compliant with the FEMA regulations. Isn't that also correct? So, we've got the two issues, the one, the regulatory thing, and the one, the, the actual physical transport of the water. And people can do that more efficiently, and has the effect of us giving more water, perhaps, is if there's, if there's development upstream. And, and that's part of the challenge.
If we don't comply with the FEMA regulations, then we lose, I believe we'd lose our flood insurance abilities for the community as well.
Well, west of town, we built dikes. I know, I'm on the NRD, we, we send money out there, we built dikes and everything else. We changed all that. Now, that's maybe a study would say, maybe if we dike along here, maybe this will happen and that will happen. I don't know. But right now, you, well, you can see what's happened to me. And I guess I'd have no recourse.
Again, I'm not sure if we can check, the data's the data, Bob. I understand your frustration. The data's the data. I'm not sure there is a recourse necessarily. I mean, you can reevaluate it and resubmit data to FEMA, but FEMA's going to act on the data and make sure it's verifiable, and then make sure it's accurate, and then they're probably won't change their mind, I would assume. I mean, that all cost, I think it cost us $5,800 to do that map amendment, if my man reserves me in that general area. So, I mean, there's a cost associated with that, and that did include the engineering. That was just fees to the federal government.
Okay. Well, my man.
Well, appreciate your coming out, Bob. I know it's probably not what you wanted to hear, but it is what it is, and again, thanks for being here. Who else? Anyone else in the audience that wants to come forward and may have an issue to talk to? Okay. Seeing these two ex-councilmen, nothing, gentlemen?
I'm saving it for the coffee.
Oh, okay. All right. Then with that, seeing nothing else on the agenda, then we are adjourned, and there are to be four council that are gonna sit here with me, and we are gonna have coffee with any of you that choose to stay, staff as well.
Happy Josh could pop in here.
Oh, yeah.